El cuerpo señor. El cuerpo señor, like. El cuerpo señor, like you never have worked before. Come on, come on, come on, come on, it's a death row. El cuerpo señor.
Toca los ojos, toca los ojos. A que mirarnos, toca los ojos.
Los ojos. Toca los pies, toca los pies. Otra vez, toca los pies, los pies.
Toca las orejas, toca las orejas. Escucha vieja, toca las orejas.
Las orejas.
El cuerpo señor, like you never have worked before. Come on, come on, come on, come on, it's a death row. El cuerpo señor.
Toca la nariz, toca la nariz. Estoy feliz, toca la nariz.
La nariz. Toca el pelo, toca el pelo. Muévelo, toca el pelo, el pelo.
Toca la boca, toca la boca. Baila como loca, toca la boca, la boca.
El cuerpo señor, like you never have worked before. Come on, come on, come on, come on, it's a death row. El cuerpo señor.
Toca las rodillas, toca las rodillas. Que ella alegría, toca las rodillas, las rodillas.
Toca el brazo, toca el brazo. Y el otro, toca el brazo, el brazo.
Toca las piernas, toca las piernas. Camina con ellas, toca las piernas, las piernas.
El cuerpo señor, like you never have worked before. Come on, come on, come on, come on, it's a death row. El cuerpo señor.
Toca los ojos.
Toca los pies.
Toca las orejas.
Toca la nariz.
Toca el pelo.
Toca la boca.
Toca las rodillas.
Toca el brazo.
Toca las piernas.
Toca los ojos.
Toca los pies.
Toca las orejas.
Toca la nariz.
Toca el pelo.
Toca la boca.
Toca las rodillas.
Toca el brazo.
Toca las piernas.
Toca los ojos.
Toca los pies.
Toca la nariz.
El cuerpo señor.
La pizziera, ironado, está informo. El borde, el borde negro está triste. El papel azul está bien. El lápiz rojo estoy mal. La creola azul está confundido. La pluma azul tiene dolor. La regla rojo está triste. El calendario verde está confundido. El papel blanco tiene dolor. El estadiendo azul tiene frío. El estudiante azul tiene frío. El borde negro tiene sueño.
La creola amarillo tiene frío. El borde dor verde está bien.
Okay now I'm recording.
Oh wait. El papel rojo está mal. El lápiz azul tiene sed. El libro negro tiene hambre. El relelo ironado está confundido. La regla morada tiene dolor. El calendario greces tiene color.
El rojo azul está feliz. El lápiz amarillo está bien. La pluma roja está triste. La regla amarillo está en el lado. El borde dor azul está feliz. La tierra azul está bien. La silla verde está abierta. El magador verde tiene color.
Yeah, I mean, we're down. We're monitoring it really closely. We're working. We're actually introducing a few new things to try to offset sales with National School Breakfast Month. We're going to be doing some things to hopefully stimulate some sales that we don't normally get at breakfast and boost those to help offset some of the decreases.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We can get the number to you.
I mean, I know them. You know, we just did a budget. You know, we're just, sales are down in certain areas 15% and in other areas slightly more.
And just a reminder to the board, this is a result of the new federal regulations we've had put in place for the act that we're now working through.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you, sir.
I thought you had come to the new nutritional value. Okay, next up, Ms. Colley with the instructional.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Carter, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. I have a variety of instructional updates for you this evening. Last month, you approved the program of studies for 2013-14, and that has kicked off quite a bit of activity at our middle school and at our high school as students and their families are reviewing courses and making requests for next year. I thought you'd be interested to know that this year, for the first time, students have been able to register online prior to their individual counseling sessions. And I'd like to thank all of our families for working with students to review course selections carefully. Related to course selection and registration is also summer school. And I'm pleased to say that since last Friday, information about summer school offerings has been located on the division's webpage under news and also on both the middle school and high school schedules webpages. And parents can access the information and fill out the registration material there and send it in to the schools. And then the middle school and the high school then forward that on to us. And I think Dr. Cataldo said we had about 17 registered already today. So those registrations are coming in. I'd also like to highlight for you, though, that if you go online and look at our offerings, this year, for the first time, we're offering a PCOSON Virtual Summer Academy where we will offer economics and personal finance, both as an in-class session at the high school in a seated course, traditional course, and as an online course. We're really excited about that offering and pretty about that offering and pretty helpful that it provides the flexibility some of our students and families have asked for, for an online course in the summer. The other exciting registration news comes from the other end of the spectrum, and that's from our pre-K students, students who are getting ready for kindergarten in the fall. Last week, the primary school held kindergarten orientation over two nights. Rising kindergarten students and their families registered. They signed up for screening. They toured the school, shared a story and a snack, and they even got to take home a book to read over the summer before they come to school in the fall. And I'm happy to let you know that we registered 101 kindergarten students last week. We want to remind all families, of course, it's not too late. So to please come on into the primary school and pick up those registration materials if you haven't had a chance to register yet. I'll call your, our attention to one other important instructional activity coming up in March, and that's our SOL writing test. That was the last paper and pencil test we did last year. That, this year, comes online as well with all of our students in grades five, eight, and 11 taking the writing SOL tests the second week in March. And the teachers and students have been really busy on the computers and preparing for that next month. In addition, the schools are just very busy. Everyone's working hard. And I thought you might like to hear a few updates from the schools. Dr. Cataldo let me know that we have 12 projects in the Tidewater Science Fair, about 22 students altogether participating in those projects, and that's going to be held on March 13th. And that we also have five Odyssey of the Mind teams participating in the local competition. That's a couple teams from the elementary school and from the middle school as well. And they'll be participating on March 23rd. So you can see we have a lot going on in our schools instructionally. Later this year, I'll share some information about spring SOL testing, but I appreciate your letting me take the time to just update you on all we're doing instructionally this evening.
Any questions?
Yes, is there a cost for the online summer courses?
There is. It's, it's the same registration cost as, as the other courses.
I'd like to say, I'd like to applaud the high school for the online class registration going to that. That's one more step that, they do that in college, and it's really great that they get a feel for it now in high school to do that. So I think that, that's great.
Thank you.
Is, is the online, the personal finance class, is that offered through, is it Virtual Virginia?
Oh, it's, we're, we're teaching it. We have a teacher here who's teaching it.
Okay, great. And who is that open to?
That is open for ninth through 12th graders. So some of our rising ninth graders who are interested in getting a jump start on that elective, that's the elective that's required now of all students graduating.
Is there a limit on the number of students who can be enrolled?
We hope not to have a limit. We, we hope that we have enough teachers who are willing that if we get the student interest, we can offer it.
Okay. Wow. That's good. Sir, was the 101 a surprise, kindergarteners?
Yeah, how many do we have this year?
It was. We did the orientation differently this year. In the past, we didn't have activities for the students. So our enrollment, registration on this time range between like 40 and 60. So we changed it up a little bit this year. And by bringing, having the students come in, we think that we got better registration attendance. So it was a higher number. And needless to say, as we work towards budgeting, we really, we have to budget in and do our best estimate as how many kindergarteners we'll have. And so this is helpful for us getting a better sense of numbers. So we were pretty excited that we had that many turnout for, for the event. This will benchmark us for next year. So next year, now we'll get a sense of what we're picking up over the summer. And I think it'll help our budgeting be even stronger as we move forward. But we want more. Kindergarteners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Sidner, would you like to walk us through the consent agenda, please?
Certainly. The consent agenda tonight is A, approval of minutes of January regular meeting and work session enclosed, approval of financial reports enclosed, approval of personnel action enclosed, approval of resolution to dispose of surplus property enclosed, and E, authorization to change appropriation and accordance with request enclosed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
My motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Second. Thank you. Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Mr. Sidner?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
That gender is just confusing you.
Chairman Carter. The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, other matters for consideration is consideration of approval of the proclamation for National School Breakfast Week. And students who eat a complete breakfast have been shown to make fewer mistakes and work faster in math exercises than those who eat a partial breakfast. It also, studies also show that students who skip breakfast are more likely to have difficulty distinguishing among similar images. They show increased errors and have slower memory recall. Do I have a motion to approve the National School Breakfast Week?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. And do we have any public comments tonight, Ms. McDowell?
No, sir, there are none.
Thank you. And Dr. Parrish, would you kick us off with our communications?
Yes, I just want to highlight the fact that this has been a very busy season so far in the General Assembly for education. There have been a plethora of bills which we anticipated this year. I want to just highlight two that are very concerning, one of which is still in the process in the General Assembly. So we remain hopeful that perhaps it will ultimately be opposed. The first bill that our community may have seen quite a bit about was the, what's called the A to F bill. And this bill sets up a system in which schools will be graded with some grade in between A and F or A and F. Our concern is that you're putting one grade on a very complex system, and you're tying together many systems underneath this grade, the federal and state accountability system, graduation indexes, and a variety of other things. As we all know, even our students don't just get one grade, they get a variety of grades for each of the content areas in their coursework and the time that we're with us. But we are trying to remain optimistic that in, within those bills, that we may not start that system until 2015. But we won't be sure of that until the General Assembly completely finishes its work. That A through F bill's been modeled on Florida's system, which many people are well aware of, are actually well below Virginia in terms of the rankings of education. So we're unsure as to exactly why we're modeling after Florida. The other bill is the Opportunity School Institution Bill, which many are calling the School Takeover Bill. And this bill is still in, in works. And this is one where we are going to try and remain optimistic does not actually come pass out of the General Assembly. But this would allow the state to set up a board that could take over schools. And our criteria was actually changed last week in the bills, which could result in well over 100 schools being taken over by the state. What is most concerning to, I know, local school boards, but as well as localities such as city councils and boards of supervisors, is the fact that not only will state and federal dollars move with the students, but so will local dollars. So we will be sending all those dollars to a state board that will have complete control over the schools, and they'll receive no input from the locality. So we are, again, waiting to see what occurs with that in the General Assembly. And that was actually based on Louisiana, which I believe is ranked 23rd or 27th in the country in education. We're ranked number four. I did want to take the opportunity to thank Delegate Helsel. He did oppose both those bills on the floor in the General Assembly. So we appreciate the fact that he was so supportive of not only Pecosin schools, but those across the state. Mr. Bowen did talk a little bit about budget, and we are working diligently on our budget. And I'll be talking a little bit more specifically in the work session, but will not be putting my budget out until March because we are waiting for the General Assembly to complete its work. And we're still working through some personnel issues as we look at position cuts. And finally, what I'd like to do is to thank you all. You may not even realize it, but it is School Board Appreciation Month. And on behalf of the school division and the community, I do want to thank you publicly for the work that you do for us because you put in countless hours and work through some tough situations. We really do appreciate everything that you do. And also, it is School Board Clerk Appreciation Month. So a thank you to Mrs. McDowell for keeping us all straight for our meetings and get, keeping us so well prepared. So a thanks to all of you. You're what helped make this such a special school division. So I thank you. That's my comments for this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Jessie?
Good evening and thank you, board. For the first time, the Pecosin Primary School will be competing in the Great Computer Challenge sponsored by WHRO. Ms. Hinshaw is the team sponsor, along with the help of Mrs. Jaeger and Mrs. Osborne. The students of the primary school brought in over $2,000 pennies for the Kids Island renovation for a total of over $222.82. They had a very successful kindergarten orientation on February 11th and 12th. Thursday, February 21st, is the Senior Social, where second graders bring their grandparents to school and dance. They play games and have a story, all for the American Heart Association. Sounds very sweet. Second graders had their annual Jump Rope for Heart on February 14th, raising over $1,520. At the elementary school, on January 1st, they had their first family reading night. Each grade level provided activities for parents and students. The night was a huge success, and they are making plans for their first family math night on February 28th. The fifth graders presented a wonderful presentation of Theseus and the Menator, and they had a great turnout of families coming out to enjoy the show. Canned food was donated at the door as admission and will be given to a nearby food pantry. PES had a great turnout of parents and family members at the awards recognition on February 13th. Students on the A and AB honor rolls received a certificate. This year, two new certificates were added, the first, a teacher's choice of the most improved student, and the second, a teacher's choice of a student from their class that is a good role model for others in remembering bulls don't bully. At the middle school, students will participate in the American Heart Association's Hoops for Hearts activities during lunch and gym classes on February 20th. In addition, healthy, healthy heart facts have been shared with students each morning during announcements. The Spring Book Fair begins Thursday, February 21st. Family Night will take place on February 26th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. The Spring fundraiser kicks off on February 25th. Look for information to come home with your student. Sixth graders will take a field trip to Jefferson Lab on March 6th. And eighth graders, writing as well, will take place on March 13th through 15th. There will be a school dance sponsored by the PTO on March 15th. And lastly, at the high schools, SOL testing is for writing March 13th and 14th, all 11th graders. Supreme sports have started this week. I hope tryouts are going well for everyone. Spirit Week, March 4th through 9th, is with the Sadie's Dance. Faculty-Student Basketball Game is on March 6th at 6:30. And the Sadie Hawkins, Sadie Hawkins Day Dance is March 9th from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. Students are registering for next year's courses with the Guidance Department and Key Club-sponsored Jeans for Homeless Teens. We collected over 87 pairs with the help of Mr. Gross and the local thrift shop. The Buckle Up Campaign is in its final push for this year's competition at PHS. Please put your seatbelt on. And the girls' basketball team is in regional competition tonight. And that concludes my report for the 19th of February. Thank you, board.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder that Pecosin Education Foundation will be holding their third annual Dinner Dance and Silent Auction fundraiser on the evening of Saturday, March 2nd, at Pecosin Yacht Club. Any support that people would be willing to contribute would be greatly appreciated. All support goes directly to the school system. Please see the Education Foundation website for ticketing and sponsorship information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wilson?
I know I certainly enjoyed the student presentation tonight, the Spanish class and how they used their iPads. And we saw some, some innovative teaching going on in our classrooms. And so I certainly want to recognize Mrs., Ms. Williams and the students that did that. And also want to just thank our chairman, Gary Carter, and Gene Hunt, who wrote an eloquent letter, very well-written letter with all the, lots of good details to Senator Tommy Normant. And I, I feel like that, that was definitely time well spent. And thank you for doing that on behalf of all of us.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Whitaker?
A couple things. First off, I, I'm sure this has been mentioned before, before I was on the board, but I wanted to give a shout out to the YMCA Before and After School Program that is held at Pecosin Primary School. It's a very good program. It's almost like an extension of the education process. I know these kids get to play, but they also get to learn. They get to interact with other kids. It's a wonderful program. And it seems that every day, my son wants me to pick him up later and later. And I tell myself it's because he's having such a good time. And not that he's just wants to stay away from me, but he is, he's, he's learning a lot. And he, he's exercising and moving. And it's, it's just a wonderful program. And I thank the people at the primary school for working with the people at the YMCA to, to put on this, this great program. My second and final item is to remind people that there is a tornado drill March 12th. I hope the schools, I think the schools are participating. For those people who are not in the schools, in your own homes, please practice some kind of drill, figure out where you'd go in your home. Tornadoes, as we've seen, seem to be just too prevalent, and they can strike anywhere in the state of Virginia at any time of the year. It doesn't matter. So please put your plans together because it can help save your life. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Very good point. Thank you very much. Mr. Melton?
Oh, I'd like to thank Pat, Pat McDowell for her wonderful service. Whenever I call, she's always in a good mood, very friendly and very helpful. So we don't take her for granted. So thank you, Pat. I have a prediction that the first 10 minutes of this school board meeting would be the most often watched rerun of a school board meeting in Pecosin, just to see that video. So maybe we'll see it on YouTube later this evening, who knows? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cast?
I also would like to thank Ms. McDowell for the wonderful job that she does. And I really enjoyed the, the student presentation also. And Rin, if you're watching, thanks for the autograph.
Thank you. Ms. Sidner?
No comments.
Okay. Jessie, in your comments, you rattled off numerous things that students have done to just give back to the community. There were clothes collections, pennies, Jump Rope for Heart. This community, I mean, I'm always impressed with the amount of community service that, that the students and the community at large comes up with. I think we did some really good things. Good examples are set for those students. Hopefully, that'll play over into good citizenship later in life. So I appreciate that report. That was very good. Also, Dr. Parrish and her staff and all the teachers and staff as well. Mr. Bowen mentioned earlier in his report that we've had numerous mid-year cuts, but we've always had money there available. And that comes from being fiscally responsible, not just spending money just because you have it, hanging on to it. And, and when we needed it, it was there. And it really saved us quite a bit over the last few years. So I would like to thank everybody that had a hand in that. That's huge. And with that, I would like to thank Ms. McDowell. You helped me out an awful lot. I'll call up, and I can't get my email or my agenda. And it's there when I get here. And, and all my papers, everything I need. And you do a wonderful job. You're very well organized. And I just really, really appreciate your work. Thank you very much.
You're certainly welcome. Now, if I could just tell the men from the women, that'd be good.
Work on it. Okay, with that, do we have any material for board review?
We do not this evening.
Okay, then we will adjourn to the work session. Thank you.